The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
I'd like to call the board meeting to order. And I, sorry, have Mike read the mission statement.
We educate all students to be college career and community ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you, Mike. Then next is our open forum. This is a time for members of the community to speak before the board about any issue of concern. I have no forums filled out today, but is there anyone who would like to speak before the board? Seeing none, then we'll move on to the roll call. Sandy?
Don, here. Jeffries?
Excuse.
Warren?
Here.
Weyner?
Here.
Beca?
Here.
Melanie?
Here.
Becker?
Here.
Chang?
Here.
Arnoldi?
Here.
We have six board members present, one excused. I'm joined at the table to my left by Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent, our board secretary Sandy Heller, and two intercity student council board members, Lokin Chang, who's president and represents Preble, and McKenna Arnoldi, who comes from John Dewey Academy. So welcome and feel free, and McKenna, you haven't been here before, but if you have questions or want to make comments at any point, feel free to do that. Then next, we have minutes of prior board meetings to approve. I'll entertain a motion to approve the following minutes. A regular board meeting October 20th, special board meetings October 27th, November 10th, closed sessions October 20th and November 3rd, and our public hearing for our budget, which was October 22nd.
So moved.
Sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then next, we have our communications. We do have one letter to be placed on file today. I'll entertain a motion to do that.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried six, zero. And then we have our monitoring reports, and that will be facilitated by Mike.
Thank you, Brenda. Mark and Stephen Miller join us at the table. And the first thing Stephen's going to have to explain is why we're now calling it the Badger Exam.
I was going to get to that.
I was thinking in honor of the big victory on Saturday.
Yes.
That's right.
Should be the Melvin Gordon exam?
Melvin Gordon III.
Yes.
Through eight.
Well, I hate to assign me the excitement here to get to the Badger Exam, but I provide a little bit of context. Just again, for the members of the viewing audience and also for the Board of Education, we've organized these reports in the form and fashion around learning initiatives. Previously, we've come to you to talk about the Common Core State Standards and the work that we've done to internalize that and make those the Green Bay School District curriculum. And we also had a previous presentation around our curriculum renewal process. So we've identified what it is that we want our students to know and be able to do. We talked about how we try to keep that process alive. One of the other questions that we continuously talk about is how will we know if our students have learned it? So the Smarter Balanced Assessment is one state assessment, now called the Badger Exam. We have a plethora of other assessments, and as we talk about other learning reports that come forward, that might be a conversation that we would entertain as well. So I'll introduce Stephen Miller, the Director of Assessment, and he'll facilitate the presentation today. We have several slides, and then we'll open it up to questions for the Board of Education. So, Stephen?
Thanks, Mark. So as Mark and Mike alluded to, the Smarter Balanced Assessment for the state of Wisconsin is now called the Badger Exam, three through eight. That's the actual technical name of the exam. And it is part of Wisconsin State Assessment System. And I will run through the presentation up on the overhead. As you may or may not know, there are a number of other assessments, and as Mark referred to, we will talk about some of those later, but I just wanted to give you an idea of how it fits in context with those other assessments. The Smarter Balanced Assessment is currently designed to roll out on March 30th and run through May 22nd. It will be a window of time in which students can complete the assessment. And as they mentioned, that change to the name Badger Exam happened in the month of October, so it's relatively new. It will replace the English Language Arts and Math elements of the WKCE. It's given in the spring, and it is an assessment that was designed to assess student understanding and learning in the Common Core State Standards.
May I ask a question? Technical question. It's replacing that. Is it the same amount of time for these exams as the previous exams?
There is actually more time required on the Smarter Balanced Assessment than there was required on the previous WKCE. It works out-
On the Badger?
Yeah.
Okay.
On the new Badger Exam. Yes, it is actually longer. It works out to be, well, actually, we'll talk about this because that's a relevant question to ask on this slide, because the WKC, which was a fill-in-the-bubble test, was very focused on content knowledge, students' mastery of specific knowledge pieces, and they had separate reading, English, and writing tests. With the Smarter Balanced, or the Badger Exam, three through eight, it's going to be a computer adaptive test, which means that the problems will become more complex as students get them correct, and they will get easier as students get them incorrect. It will be skills-focused, and information that's new as of the last couple of weeks is that it will also be untimed. They have recommended times that you should set up the testing, which work out to be about three hours for each exam at the elementary level, and three and a half and three hours at the middle school level. However, there's a strong emphasis on the fact that it is an untimed assessment, meaning students can take as long as they need to to complete the assessment. We do not have at this time all the specific details of what that might look like. If a student starts part of the test, do they have to finish it in the same day? We don't know that today. Those technical details have not been provided to us. But what I can say to you definitively today is that DPI has shared with us that it is an untimed assessment.
And that's new information, because I attended your other workshop on this, and that wasn't clear.
In the last two weeks.
Because of the computer component.
Yes. In the last two weeks, we discovered that it will be an untimed assessment. So new information does become available, I'd like to tell people, daily as we continue to implement the Badger Exam.
Stephen, maybe this is the good time to get into this, or if you want to wait until later. I would like you to talk a little bit about what principals and staff are doing with students who are not computer literate. And I know we have lots of students who don't have computers at home and are not as comfortable as other students, which can affect their test taking. Would you talk about that, because I think that's kind of a key issue.
I absolutely agree, and especially for our children in poverty who may not have the same amount of computer experience in the home. I guess I would say as part of a comprehensive plan, our library media specialists and our technology integrators have been involved with looking at the Badger Exam and figuring out what technology skills students need to have, and then working with the principals and the teaching staff to make sure that students are exposed to and have opportunities to work with that kind of technology. I can give you a very specific example. One of the tools that we found when we did the field testing last spring for what was then called the Smarter Balanced Assessment was just a little notepad that you can pull up to take notes as you're reading through an article. And when I get to the performance task, I'll talk a little bit about why that might be important. Our third, fourth, and fifth graders had absolutely no exposure to that kind of technology before.
Because if you're worried about how to navigate through this, your mind isn't on the computer.
Yep, yep, yeah. We will be talking with our principals on November 25th, actually, about a plan moving forward. Well, I think I can circle back around. Maybe I'll just provide a general overview, and then we'll kind of talk about some of the plans that we intend to implement.
I'll ask it at the end.
Thank you, Brenda. All right, so six item types to look for on the Badger Exam, three through eight. I still have to get myself to say Badger Exam all the time. Selected response items, constructed response, extended response, technology-enabled, technology-enhanced, and then performance tasks. I'm going to just give a brief overview of each of these types. If you have any questions, again, don't hesitate to ask. Selected response, typical to what you see in any standardized test where students are given some information and then they're asked to select the right answer, so A, B, C, or D. But then they also have multiple correct options for selected response, where students may have to select all that applied, which is more typical.
So if you get, say there's three right answers there, you only get two, are you deducted for that?
Absolutely. And if you guess incorrectly, you would be deducted as well. I can't say specifically for this problem, you know, how that would work, but yes, you would get points off if you only picked two and three applied.
Okay.
Or if you picked four and only three applied, you would also get points taken off. Then there's constructed response items. Again, this is not new. This was included in the WKC in the past, where students would have information, and then they would have to respond with a short answer. So nothing new in the standardized testing arena. But this would be an example of something that is a little bit newer and in response to the Common Core, where answers, where a problem might have multiple solutions. In the case of this problem, students are given some information about designing a rabbit pen, and then they have to actually come up with three different ways to design that rabbit pen. So there are multiple possible correct answers here. Technology-enabled item, this would be an example of a technology-enabled item where students would have something read to them. There would be audio involved. They would have to listen to a speech. Again, because of the untimed nature of the test, they could listen to the speech over-
The voice on there was very familiar.
I bet it was. Yeah. Well-
For the record, that was an example that Stephen created.
Yeah.
For us.
Yes. I took the text that they had, because they provided text with it, but I thought to try to make it more real. I mean, they actually listened to the audio, and then they have to decide which sentence should be omitted in order to make it a better speech. In this case, a technology-enhanced item, students would have to highlight where this sonnet changes in the speaker's message. So they would actually use the mouse. We talked about some of those skills. They would have to use the mouse, click, and highlight text in this case. Here's an example where they would have to use the mouse to draw a line on a graph. So again, providing that exposure for those items. Now, the newest kind of item, and probably the most difficult that I found for us to get our heads wrapped around, is a performance task. And in a performance task, there's actually a 30-minute activity generally that takes place in the classroom. In the case of this performance task, it's not quite 30 minutes, but the facilitator named here, which would be the teacher, actually goes through and talks about a lemonade stand. We could also have a discussion about context. I don't know how many of our kids actually know what a lemonade stand is anymore, but again, this is just a sample problem provided by the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium. So the teacher talks a little bit about a lemonade stand, and then the kids go into the computer lab.
Are kids, excuse me, Stephen, are kids during this given any sort of exercise breaks, bathroom breaks? You know, that's pretty stressful. You sit here for a long time and without some kind of a break. Are teachers instructed to give students periodic breaks?
That will be part of what we roll out. Because of the, part of it is because of the untimed nature of the test, we've been told that the student could leave their computer for up to 20 minutes and that the test would still stay active for them. If they leave for longer than 20 minutes, then the teacher would have to reactivate that task. That's one of the technical requirements we've been told. So I would never put a kid in front of a computer for more than 60 minutes at a stretch. So we're going to be encouraging the idea of frequent breaks, you know, changing the activity. And again, we don't know, when a student starts a part of the test, will they have to finish that in one day, or will they get multiple days to finish that? That information is not available yet, but we will respond to that when we have that.
Just as a follow-up, is the test security a little bit different because it levels? So in other words, the questions that I would get may be different than Brenda's, may be different. So there is less concern about stopping, taking a break?
Or going in the bathroom together and sharing answers?
Right. And because you could be looking at very different questions, is that why that seems to be much more relaxed?
Yeah, there's a little more flexibility there, especially on the computer adaptive task.
Sure.
On the performance task, I don't know that there will be as much flexibility with regards to that because the questions would be similar, and again, it's based on that experience that those kids have in the classroom. And so it's not as flexible. But I know in the computer adaptive portion of the test, absolutely, you could have kids taking breaks, you know, and they wouldn't have the same test. They wouldn't be taking the same test. Sometimes we'll get more complex, or easier, depending on how they respond. So students would see, when they went into the lab, this graph, and then they would have to use this graph to complete a table. And then what typically happens, and again, this is based on the Common Core State Standards, students are given additional pieces of information, and they're asked to synthesize those pieces of information with previously provided information. So in this case, they're given information about sales of lemonade relative to July. So they're told the August amounts relative to July, and now they have to fill in an additional table.
Stephen, are all of these examples in here the same grade level, or did you mix them up?
I mixed them up, but that's the hook. So two more slides, and I promise I'll tell you.
All right.
Okay?
All right.
All right. So then students are asked to create their own graph, their own pictograph, and to use cups to represent the number of cups of lemonade sold. And they actually pick, if you look, they have to actually pick their scale, so four, 10, or 20 cups. So they have to determine an appropriate scale. So that was the third-grade math performance task. I thought I'd give you-
Need a comment that ties into the Common Core standards, is that correct?
Yes, it does. Yep. It is connected to the third-grade Common Core State Standards, which are very rigorous. They simply are.
That's critical. When we go back and connect some of the dots, we talked about the Common Core being a more rigorous standard and our floor for which we build things upon, and then we talked about the need to have a curriculum renewal process that allows those teachers the ability to really drill down to what it is that students not only need to know and be able to do, but then how do we instruct in a way that allows for that transference into another experience? Because that is really what they're being asked to do on the assessment as well. That's a good point.
So I thought I'd provide a sixth-grade ELA example for a performance task as well. So you kind of see, you saw the math, right, take a look at the English Language Arts. In this case, students are given an article about robots to read, and then the teacher facilitates a pairs discussion and then a class discussion. So again, the students are given this article. They have to read it independently. Then they have a pairs, so they have a partner discussion. They have to answer those three questions, and then there's a classroom discussion. Then again, students are brought into a computer lab. They're given a second article to read on the computer. So again, I talked about that idea of bringing up that notepad, taking notes on the computer. Students could do that if they wanted to. I do want to emphasize the fact that students are given unlimited scratch paper as well. So for those kids that they're more comfortable writing their thoughts out, they would have that option as well. They're given a third source article. So sixth grade, three articles, same theme. It's all about, you know, robots, more or less. And then the first question they see is explain what Source 1, so the one they had in class, and Source 3, one of the ones that they were exposed to when they got to the computer lab, say about how robots are able to save lives by paraphrasing the information while avoiding plagiarism. So our sixth graders have to know what plagiarism is. They have to know how to cite sources appropriately. So those are skills that are important. You can see some of the key elements that they point out from Source 1 and Source 3 in the example. And then every performance task in English Language Arts ends with a writing prompt of some kind. The students, and again, this is aligned to the Common Core. The students will either have a narrative, a persuasive or opinion, or an informative essay that they're asked to write. And they do try to make them authentic tasks. In this case, they're asked to write a narrative for a technology club. But again, it's based on those three articles that they read.
Sure.
But that rating, oh, you're going to talk about that. That could be read if I want to hear what that says in case my reading is not, or I read it and I want to make sure I understand. Somebody can read that to me. Is that accurate?
Yes.
On my headset?
Yes, absolutely. So our students will be in the lab with their headsets on. And again, relatively new information within the last two weeks. We do know that students in grades six through eight can have the whole test read to them. That's a change from what we've typically had in the past. In the past, if it was on the reading test, you could not have problems read to you. But we were told by the Department of Public Instruction, again, within the last two weeks, that students in grades six through eight could have the reading test problems read to them. So, yes, through the computer.
Would you also talk about how this affects and how ELL and special ed students are tested?
Absolutely. So it was typical in the past for our special education students to have extended time. That's now what they call a universal tool. That's available to every student. Testing in smaller environments, something we typically did with our English and language learners or our special education students. We will have that option available for all students. The flip side of that then becomes, how do you deal with the capacity when you know that any kid could take an entire day to take the test theoretically? And the problems get more complex as they go on. How do you figure out how to divide your staff up when giving the assessment so that you have optimal testing environments for every child? Not just the students with an IP or a 504 or English language learner, but every kid who might possibly need a smaller environment or even a one-on-one type of testing environment.
Can we exempt any special ed students?
There will be a small portion of the population that takes the Dynamic Learning Maps Assessment, which replaces the Wisconsin Alternative Assessment for students with disabilities for the ELA and the math portions. So it's about 1% of our population.
Will this be in Spanish? This will be in Spanish?
Well, what we've seen, and again, a lot of this is preliminary, but with the practice test, if you take the practice math test, they do have side-by-side English and Spanish translations.
All right. For a student whose English is not their first language, is there a point where a student is, say, seventh or eighth grade, has been in our school system, is there a point where a Hispanic student has to take it in English? Has DPI decided that if you have five years of learning in one of our schools, you should have enough English preparation to take it in English? Is that any kind of a requirement there, or can that student who's a Hispanic always take it in Spanish?
DPI hasn't come out and made any statements specifically about that, but what's typically happened in the past on our assessments is if the student qualified for English Language Learner Services, so if they were a Level 1 through 5 ELL student, then it might be appropriate for them to receive questions in Spanish. So they haven't said one way or the other.
How we do.
If there's going to be a cutoff date, you know, like they've been in the country for five years.
I think that's kind of a critical issue.
And internally, that's a process that both, you know, Claudia, her department, and then Julie within the ELL department will work with Stephen to ensure that we have the appropriate modifications as allowed by, you know, the test as well. And we want to make sure that we provide the kids the appropriate accommodation so that they can perform in the most stress-free environment as possible.
Okay. Brenda?
Under designated support, it says bilingual dictionary. Is that dictionary going to be available in more than just Spanish?
We've been told that it will be available in multiple languages. I have not seen the Arabic one yet. That's one that I asked for specifically with DPI. I haven't seen one in Mung yet, although I have seen Chinese. So I've asked for what I think would favor the students in our district, but I haven't been given definitive answers on whether or not all of those. The Spanish one I've seen as well. So some of them I have. I mean, there are some bilingual dictionaries available. They say that there will be more available by the time the test actually rolls out. I just haven't seen those yet, so I can't say for sure we'll have all of the languages represented in our district, but I have asked for those.
John, I mean, we need that, obviously.
Yes, absolutely. We want to give our students every appropriate advantage that we can on the test, knowing that many of our students who struggle with English as a second language are already at a disadvantage taking an English assessment. All right. So again, I put this slide up just to help emphasize the fact that universal tools conversation has really become a part, a big part of the conversation now of how do we take advantage of the opportunities we have with testing in those smaller environments or allowing our students to take it over multiple days potentially, or using extended time in a single day to complete the assessment, when that typically hasn't been the case in the past. And then I just wanted to show you a picture. These are students from Tank Elementary who participated in the field test last spring. Again, just to give you that feel, you'll notice the carols that are up around the computers because even though each problem is different, one of the things we learned in our first year of field testing, which was two years ago, is that despite the fact that you give the students a security briefing, third graders may not always pay attention to everything you say.
Really?
And there will, there will always be one who-
When does that kick in?
There will always be that one child who says, in the middle of the test, "Hey, his problem number five is not the same as my problem number five."
Kids like to share.
Well, you know, we do a lot of that collaboration in the classroom, so they get used to it. And now we're trying to get them geared up to a different kind of environment when we're doing a secure testing environment. So, you know, we've been working on rolling out appropriate headphones as well as these carols to kind of separate the devices at each school to create an appropriate testing environment.
Okay.
And then I just included links in the presentation. If you're interested in taking a Smarter Balanced Practice Test, you can follow that link at a later date. I'm not going to dig-
We gave you the PDF version, but if you'd like the live Google presentation, we could send it your way as well, which has the links there, so.
And then there's also a link to the performance tasks for all the grade levels that will be tested, if you're interested in seeing what those look like.
Andrew?
You don't get scored when you take the practice test, though?
You don't get a score back, no. You just have the opportunity to see what the problems look like. You can see what the correct answers are. There's a way to click on that, but we can't.
You can, you can see within it.
Yeah.
Anybody else have questions? Chris?
I'm going to have a comment. It goes back, Mr. Beca, to your initial comment about those youngsters who don't have ready access to computers at home. I don't think it's a question you can answer now, but I think we need to take a look at. I mean, I really don't know, sitting here, about those youngsters who don't have access at home, how are they actually doing in school with computer usage? And it seems to me that question has to be answered in a hurry, and if they're not doing well, we've got to do something to hurry them. Get them comfortable with.
I think if I could offer just a comment, and I wouldn't be able to give you the specific answer to those individual students, but I can tell you that, you know, under Stephen's direction, we've taken advantage of a lot of our field test opportunities for a couple of reasons. We felt it was important to expose our kids to that environment. Also gave us an opportunity to kind of, you know, work out some of the pieces in terms of how does the assessment perform on hard-wired devices versus devices that are laptops and have to access the wireless network. And also given our teachers the opportunity to see what it is that the students will be exposed to so as they provide instruction and learning experiences, they can replicate some of these experiences as well. Additionally, our principals over the last year have taken, under Stephen's direction, a lot of these practice tests so that they can see how they can lead within a system that has to leverage technology. Now couple that with our initiative to access devices, increase access to devices at the buildings that Diane has been speaking about, is really positioned as better for this. And yet I think that we still can do more. You know, I really believe that there can be more outreach to students and parents that- that provide them the ability to take devices home, as an example. And that's the piece that we're looking at doing right now with our principals, is really trying to troubleshoot. What do you see as your gaps in your building, and then how can we help support that? And we've had some examples with ACT Aspire this year being tested at the high school level, provided us a little bit of learning experience that we can come back and provide those experiences with our elementary principals as well.
Okay, Brenda?
And the transition to Smarter Balance, our 10th graders took WKCE this fall, was it just science, it just said it was science and social studies?
Yep, just science, our fourth, eighth, and 10th graders took science and social studies for the WKCE.
And then, so then, in spring, our 11th graders will take the Badger exam.
Our 11th graders will take the ACT with writing and the work case assessment.
Oh, that's right, they don't take a Badger exam in high school.
No, three through eight, yep. Yeah, the system has really gotten, you know, we talk about complexity, the assessment system in Wisconsin has really gotten a lot more complex this year.
So, have we, we've lost reading and math then at WKCE in high school?
Well, yes and no. The ACT Aspire, which all of the freshmen had to take this year, has reading, writing, and actually a language portion to the assessment, or an English portion to the assessment, as well as science and math. So, the same five areas that are assessed on the ACT were assessed with the ACT Aspire for all of our freshmen this spring, and will be assessed for all of our freshmen and sophomores in the spring, I'm sorry, I meant. The freshmen were assessed in the fall, in the spring, all ninth and 10th graders will be assessed with the ACT Aspire.
Will that be the case every year, or was this just a...
Well...
I mean, will ninth and 10th, will ninth graders take it twice a year, is what I'm asking?
That's the case this year. Ninth graders will take it twice this year, 10th graders will take it once this year. But...
Run, sure.
Yes.
Quite honestly. You know, we were wondering, is that the, you know, the baseline and then your growth opportunity, or is that an implementation we have not heard yet from DPI?
Andrew?
I'm pretty sure I know the answer to the question, but is there any, was there any statistical norming done to provide any kind of meaningful equivalency between WKCE scores and this, or is this just another do-over, move-forward point like so many other times?
I think the attempt was made to help prepare us for the Smarter Balance assessment, and I guess I would say the increased rigor and complexity, when they realigned the WKCE scores a couple of years back. I don't know if you recall that discussion, where they, basically, they set the cut scores a lot higher than what they had been in the past? And so, they were attempting to project what we would see as proficiency on the Smarter Balance assessment, but we can't say definitively because there's really been no linking studies or any kind of a correlation analysis between the existing WKCE and the, well, the Badger exam, no.
If someone at the state level had wished to, you could have normed a sample by having the same group of kids take both, if you, if there was a desire to do that by the powers that be, but it sounds like there was not.
Yeah, and it could've been a funding situation they ran into.
Sure.
I don't know, you know, I can't speak to that specifically, why there hasn't been a correlation or linking study done, but it just wasn't.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle?
I just wanted to just share a comment. The amount of work and effort being put in by our team, both here at the district level and collaboration with the buildings, has been extraordinary. And what's challenging, and our opportunity goes right back to what you were saying, Dr. Wagner, is that because not all students have access and dragging and clicking for some students is second nature while others don't have those resources, we continue to work to provide that, I think, is of great concern to me and to all of us. And I think that that's why there's been extraordinary efforts and conversations and partnership with technology. We're very grateful for tech integrators and for Stephen Miller, who is relentless at the State Department in terms of trying to get the resources that we need. Right now, our push is to really get some practice tests in, because as we know, for those of us who've had children who've already, you know, taken college entrance exams, you practice a lot. You go to Kaplan, you try a lot of things to get, it's test-taking skills that have absolutely nothing to do with what you know and are able to do. So, I, there's, it's been a hard, hard push and will continue to be. And then, of course, behind the scenes, it's the behind-the-stage doors is what's going on with Diane and her shop in terms of the capacity of technology to be able to manage this district-wide without the whole system crashing. And I think that that's a wonderful challenge and opportunity for us, and keep working hard with that. And then, of course, the teachers and students, and we can't forget them as well. They're preparing, they're preparing all the time. So, it's a very big game changer for us, and we will be as ready as we can possibly be.
Yes.
I mean, we haven't even talked about the politics of the situation, which is enormous. I mean, the judgments that are gonna be made in Madison on these test results, I mean, you have middle-class families, you have two-year-olds that are computer literate. We have kids that come to us in poverty when, the first time they step in the classroom, that's the first time they've seen a computer.
Yes.
And we're being judged on all of that in comparison to schools that have almost no poverty or almost no ELL students, so, I mean, the politics of the situation is very troubling, and we're gonna just have to see how that works. But I think that, to me, is a major concern. Andrew?
Are private schools receiving state voucher money? Are they gonna have to do this completely the same, or is it gonna be a, yeah, but half of it, or none of it at all?
We don't know. We don't know yet, but I think the push is to allow private schools to take whatever test they want to.
So they would have to take a test?
A test, right. And I'll talk more about that later. But, no, I, that's, kind of the push is that the state shouldn't force private school students to take the same test that the public school gives them. Even though, even though, and I'll bring this up now, Brad Carl, who was at the Legislative Advocacy Conference, who is in charge of the Value Added Institute at UW-Madison, recognized expert around the country on this sort of stuff, said, "If you are gonna compare students and compare schools, they all have to take the same test. Otherwise, there is no way of comparing students if they take different tests."
Didn't, but didn't Milwaukee voucher schools, I mean, they took WKCE?
They're taking WKCE.
So they weren't given a choice of what, they had to take WKCE?
Correct.
So they weren't given a choice.
But that's just gonna change.
So then, the, I thought I heard somebody at the legislative conference talk about them taking Smarter Balance.
Well, if things stay as they are, that would be the case, but we're, things are shifting constantly.
We're in a time of flux.
Yes.
I have to make comment again on Mike's, Mr. Black's comment. I thought of that too as we're sitting here. It becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy to make certain kids in schools look bad. I mean, it could be, it's a skeptical way of looking at it. Just like redlining neighborhoods became a self-fulfilling prophecy that those neighborhoods became even more detrimental in terms of what they had and offered. And, yeah, this is a, you know, I don't know if somebody is being mischievous as they've set this up this way to, and again, one could argue perhaps I'm a little paranoid, but I do believe there is an effort to knock public education and privatize education.
Just because you're paranoid doesn't mean that somebody isn't following you.
But I would...
One can be paranoid for a good reason.
Right, right.
But I would argue that we're giving these kids S4Ks, and they don't have to take Smarter Balance until third grade. So we have four years to get them computer-ready for this test. And I don't know that, I mean, obviously, it's much easier if you're a computer native at 18 months, you're clicking around, but I still think these are skills that we should be able to have our kids ready. I mean, right now, we're scrambling to catch up, but in the long run, we should have something in place so that our third-grade students are not deficient in computer skills when they take Smarter Balance.
They shouldn't be inexperienced for those things.
Absolutely.
No, but it's, it's not something you have to practice, you know, I mean, it's something that you can gain with a certain amount of time, you know, exposed to. Twenty hours versus 100 for some kids, I mean, I still think you can, we should expect that of ourselves.
I do like to compare it to getting a driver's license, though, in the sense that I think our teachers are doing a wonderful job of preparing our kids with the knowledge that they need and the skills that they need to be successful, but you would never think of having a 16-year-old walk in and take the written test, but then not get any on-the-road experience. So, my concerns around this assessment are primarily related to the interface itself and just kids being familiar with how to use the different tools, because every one of these testing interfaces is a little bit different. And so, you know, if a kid has more experience driving, they can probably move from car to car a lot easier. And so, some of those kids that come from homes where they've had a lot of technology background will be at an advantage to kids who maybe don't have as much experience on the computer, even in the time that we've given them, and we're absolutely going to do that. The other thing, you know, our new-to-the-country kids are gonna be at a disadvantage as well, depending on what kind of computer background that they have.
Andrew?
I was gonna say, not to be pessimistic about a state-mandated tool, but in Green Bay and everywhere, while it's true we will have some of our kids from 4K up until they take this, there are schools where we will have had all, virtually all of the kids in Green Bay from 4K through 3, and there will be schools where I bet a good third of them will not have been with us that, will not have been within Wisconsin that whole time, which is a huge difference. I think, I agree with Brenda, I think for the kids that we have, I think we'll have them ready to do this, absolutely, but, again, unlike, unlike private schools, which I guess is neither here nor there, if they don't have to take this particular test, we, of course, take everyone who comes in, and that includes, as you said, people who've not been in the country, or people who've not been in Wisconsin and haven't been exposed to this kind of test, et cetera.
Yeah.
What, and I shouldn't keep going on about this, a couple of years ago, when I was at Tank, the principal told me in the fifth grade, there were less than a handful of kids that had been there kindergarten through fifth grade. That's a heck of a turnover, and I don't believe Tank is that unique compared to many of our other schools, back to our issue. We're certainly, you can only do the best you can at your point in time, and we're certainly hoping other schools within the state are able to step up to the plate as we are. And, I don't know about other states, but at least in our state, we hope we can accomplish that, so, to help these kids and help society.
Stephen, are you done?
I am.
Any other questions for Stephen? Thank you very much, thank you for your presentation and for all your work, and with the rest of your staff, thank them for us, and there's much more work ahead.
Absolutely.
And thanks for sending us the PowerPoint, that was helpful.
Yeah, and some of those questions are kinda hard.
This is not, I mean, this is a serious...
I used it.
This is for you guys.
I couldn't figure out how to find the app.
You can't go back and look without, I'll follow.
Oh, I think we can, let me just check on that.
Well, then, I may be used. As a matter of transition, I'll share with you next steps. We talked about learning reports moving forward and possibly taking another step into additional assessments for our next one. Board member Black and Jeffries and I will be meeting Wednesday, this Wednesday, to discuss again additional items, so if you have suggestions, please send them our way. But we'll also be talking about school monitoring reports and what that looks like. So, we'll be able to get out in the update at the end of the week in anticipation of where we'll be going for the rest of the months, okay?
Good.
All right.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Stephen.
Don Mark certainly substantiates why we were investing so much money in our technology.
Well, right.
I mean, it's...
Diane, thanks to you and your staff, too, for all the tech work in the schools.
You done? All right. Next, we have our superintendent's update, I'll turn it over to Dr. Williams.
Gosh, we're gonna start with the calendar, thank you. December 1st, it's right around the corner, Teaching and Learning Work Session, 5:30 here in the boardroom. Also, that same time, immediately following, the Organizational Support Work Session Meeting. And then, we have our December intercity Student Council Meeting here in the boardroom at 7:00 AM on December 11th. So, that is our favorite time when we get to get up at 4:00 in the morning to meet with our favorite students, but it actually is always a very important meeting for us, and I much appreciate all the participation we have and feedback we get from students. Then, we have our regular board meeting, December 15th. Then, the district will be in recess from December 24th through the 2nd of January, with classes resuming on January 5th. So it'll be a nice, long break for our students, and perhaps we can get those iPads and laptops into hands of some of our kids to practice, we're seriously over the holiday break, and that might be helpful for them. So that is the calendar. Then I have one discussion item, and I know that Lori Blakesley is providing me with a little help on this, I don't know if you wanna do it first, or if I can give a little intro to this? Okay. Tomorrow is a very important day for our media. November 18th is the day that members of the media will be joining a tour at the renovated Preble High School Field House. And I, you've been invited, obviously, at noon on Tuesday. We actually had a preliminary tour last Friday, the staff went and toured, and Lori and I joined them.
I was there today.
To look at the changes in the Field House. And I think that what was really important to me was the recognition of, it was a coming together of all the work and sacrifice that people had made to make this a really great place for kids again. And I think that, talking with staff that day and really talking with community, I had a community member talk to me today about it. Often, weeks don't go by when people talk to me about the result of the Preble Fire and how people came together quickly and how the Restoration Company played a significant role, moving very quickly and providing a great place again for kids. So, I, and the community, I mean, it's very attractive. And Lori did some, a little photographing for us as kind of a preempt, and she was sending a little Twitter feed, I don't know if you did that yet with the media?
Did it tonight, yeah.
She's gonna put it out so that they know what's to come.
It looks great, it really does.
It really...
The staff is pleased.
Yeah. Well, and when I looked and saw all, this is a hardwood maple floor, and when you see and think about the magnitude of having, there were piles and piles of wood, and you go, wow. So, anyway, they did a wonderful job. So you can see where we've been and where we went. it. And I look out at the audience, and I see Mike Stengel, and I know Mark Smith was intricate in being there all the time, and Alan Wagner on point, and, of course, the entire Preble team, so.
When I talked to Dan Retske today, he said, you know, it'd been easy for staff to just sit and complain and moan about what they couldn't do or schedule. He said, everyone just, all right, this is it, and they adapted, and the FIET classes adapted, and the sports teams adapted.
Well, we have a Preble student here. I don't know what your thoughts might be.
It was really nice how they all came together, and we actually worked around the fire instead of just, like Mr. Blaca said, complaining about it. It was really nice to see everyone coming together.
Thank you. That's my celebration for tonight. And I have no action items, so I'm complete.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Lainfeld. Next, we'll move to our legal update. Melissa's.
While she's coming to the table, the other piece is Lori Blakesley, and I should have mentioned her, who is the communication expert, getting information to families, to media, the whole group. So I want to publicly thank you, Lori, as well.
Good evening. The legal update for today is an update on legislation that was passed the last legislative cycle, and that is the Technical Excellence Scholarships, or TES, foreign acronym. The TES scholarships are modeled on the Academic Excellence Scholarships, which we currently have in place in the district. And the legislature passed legislation that will award scholarships to students in the technical education field to attend Wisconsin Technical College for up to six semesters for a total of $2,250 per semester. That excludes the summer sessions, so those are the fall and the spring sessions. And as the memo details, there are a number of requirements for a school district to be eligible for this coming school year to award these scholarships to their students. The board will be asked in the coming months by the district to adopt a policy so that we have the necessary foundation in place so that we can award the scholarships to the students. We will be eligible for the same amount of TES scholarships as we are for the Academic Excellence Scholarships. A student may only receive one of the scholarships. They can't receive both. But that, it's a great opportunity for our students to receive these scholarships. So as we come forward in the next few months, we'll be asking you to approve or adopt a ranking system for eligible students. And the Higher Education Board has set forth a model ranking system. So we will be discussing here in the district whether we want to adopt that ranking system or develop our own. We will be asking you to have a policy as to how long a student must have attended the school here in the district to be eligible for the scholarship. We'll be, we have a grading system, a grading policy in place, which is a prerequisite to be eligible for the scholarships. And we'll have to have a policy that describes our tie-breaking procedure. Unlike the AES Scholarship, the Technical Education Scholarship grades are only a tiebreaker if the points amassed under the recommended ranking system are the same points for students. And then the grade point average for a student in the career in technical education classes a student has taken matter, not the overall grade point average. And what the Higher Ed Board is recommending is that we adopt similar policies to what we already have in place for the Academic Excellence Scholarships.
Do we have a limit to the number of scholarships that could be awarded to Green Bay kids?
It's the same number of Academic Excellence Scholarships, and I don't know how many offhand we have. I apologize. It's based on a formula and how big our.
There isn't like one per high school or necessarily?
I think it could be more than one per high school. It's based on your student population.
Okay.
Very cool. So look for some new policies coming forward in the coming months. Any questions?
We have to have this ready to go by?
February 1st.
Okay. So, and then, but then submitting the names of the students happens at the?
By February 25th, we have to submit the names of the students.
Well, it's by February. Okay. All right. So we'll be seeing those policies next month, probably?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
We are working as we speak.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Next, we'll move to our intercity Student Council part, and I'll turn that over to Lokeen.
Thank you. For high school news, Preble High School's Mary Newmeyer was named Girls' Golfer of the Year by Press Gazette for her accomplishments at regionals recently and her accomplishments in her high school career. Sidney Onesty and Katie Worpinski were also honorable mentions. Preble student Rosin Soa is also aiming for her first state title in swimming. She is competing in the 200-yard and 100-yard freestyle. East High Schools Caitlin Holzer and Liam Levert have been named Scholars of the Week by the Press Gazette as well. Caitlin Holzer, if you don't know, she's the only national merit semifinalist in Green Bay. And Jeremy Kivett from East High School was also named the 2014 Green Bay Packers Community Quarterback Award. He received a thousand dollars' worth of scholarship money. He accepted this award at Government Ethics and Business and Government Luncheon on the, last Thursday, the 14th. Elliott Christensen from Avastone Technologies, which is a web design and web solutions company, visited the East Co-op class, Co-op Heard of Education, as part of the Junior Achievement Excellence in FXA, which is in conjunction with the Business and Government FXA. And Green Bay West Marketing Co-op visited California as part of the trip, and they also visited Google. For upcoming events, Preble High School is hosting their Seven Brothers Musical, which is on 21st and 22nd. They also had their first showing last week. And I believe East High School's track musical is also having a show. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for Lokeen? All right. Thank you. We'll look forward to our meeting on the 11th, the Intercity Student Council. All right. Next, we have our Legislative Liaison Report. I'll turn that over to Mike.
Thank you, Brenda. You have an attachment that includes a bunch of attachments from the Legislative Advocacy Conference in Stevens Point. And if anyone wants printouts of some of those, let Sandy know. She has the hard copies if someone is going through that and wants a copy of one of the presentations. I attended along. Brenda was there, Michelle, and also Lori. So, anyone else, if you want to chime in at any, I'm just gonna talk briefly about a couple of things that came up at the conference, some of the comments made by some of the speakers, and then I'm gonna update you on what's going on in Madison with the governor and the legislature with educational issues and kind of, I think, where we're headed. The first person I want to mention was our first speaker, Dr. Julie Mead, who is an educational leadership professor at UW Madison, and she's done extensive research on public schools and the impact of vouchers. She talked a lot about the fact that public education is mandated in the Wisconsin Constitution. And one of the things she talked about is, what does it mean to have a right to an education when a voucher program is in place? At what point, if any, does a state's funding of private education subvert its constitutional obligation to provide adequately for public education, thereby converting a child's right to an education to merely the right to shop for one? I just want to share one more, a couple, and she talked about, there's a couple of books out there that really show that public schools do outperform private schools and outperform charter schools. Her research, other research shows that public schools where poverty rates were under 10% scored the highest or among the highest in the world. And public schools where the poverty rates were 10 to 25% of the student body scored among the top few nations in the world. Her final thoughts, constitutional obligation of state legislatures to fund and nurture the common public school is paramount and may not be subordinated to a legislative desire to subsidize the private choices of individual parents. You can have a public school system without choice, but you cannot have a choice program without a healthy public school system. State constitutions have established that children have a genuine right to quality education, not merely the privilege to shop for one. And if we are going to redefine the public in public education, we need to do so mindfully after a full debate on what is at stake and what justifies the change. I had mentioned before Bradley Carl, who is Associate Director for Policy at the Value-Added Research Institute at UW Madison, and he made a couple of points. He said, "All potential measures of school performance have technical and policy trade-offs that must be balanced in making decisions. Choices about which measures to use for holding schools accountable and how to weigh them relative to one another should always be driven by the intended uses of the data." And then he, what I had mentioned before, the fact is, is that if you are going to be giving assessments and comparing groups of students, students must all take the same assessment, otherwise the comparisons are invalid. And then, just one brief comment from Lori Pincino, who's Director of the Office of Educational Accountability at the Department of Public Instruction. And one point she made that kind of stuck out to me is that the intent and purpose of the accountability system should drive the design. In other words, what do you want to accomplish by your accountability? One more thing, one of the speakers on Common Core was Jim Morgan, Vice President of Wisconsin Manufacturers and Commerce. That's an interesting group which has generally supported conservative causes, but they are huge supporters of the Common Core. And he talked about why Common Core. Consistency from district to district and state to state. Accountability results in the ability to improve where needed. Competitiveness, preparation for global marketplace. Innovation, creative teachers reaching students in creative ways. And quality, benchmark, and more rigorous. And he said, "Common Core has given local communities a common purpose, the state's a common goal, and the country a tool to ensure our long-term success." So obviously, that is an organization that wants to make sure that our students are well-prepared for the workforce when they leave school. Any questions, Aron? Brenda or Michelle, any comments on the conference?
I thought it was very good. Covered a lot of ground, a lot of the issues that are facing us the next few months, so it was good.
I think that the piece that people may not necessarily be paying attention to is a discussion around workforce development and actually the fact that in the state of Wisconsin, we do not have the physical bodies that will be needed in the future to fill the workforce. And I think that's something to really think about. I think the other message behind that is the recognition that we need to educate each, every child, every day, to be college, career, and community-ready, because at least that will move somewhat forward as a state. But it's very concerning when you start to look at the retirees and where the numbers of youth are and young people, and if they're staying or going and leaving the state and so forth. So that, to me, is the kind of discussion sometimes that we need to have with our policymakers around the fact that the work that we're doing, and I see we're gonna have a little more discussion around career in tech ed and some of those pieces, it becomes paramount that we educate and provide that personal pathway for each child and hopefully have a community where students want to stay after they graduate and work here with us as well.
Point of clarification. You indicated, I forget your exact wording, there aren't enough students to fill the needs that are out there. Does that mean there aren't enough students trained to fill the needs that are out there, or are not enough, number-wise, students, period, to fill?
Bodies.
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 Todd Barry was there from the Wisconsin Taxpayers Alliance, and he said, "A lot of this talk about jobs really," we'll see, I think he said it was foolish, because he said, "You can't talk jobs when there aren't people to take the jobs." You know, talk about, well, we're gonna add this many jobs, and he showed the population trends in Wisconsin. He said, "There aren't gonna be people to take those jobs unless things change."
Will it become like the UP?
Well, I mean, there's more outmigration, particularly of college grads, than there is in migration. You know, the whole aging, he said some charts, the aging of the population, you know, and the 18 to 24-year-olds, 18 to 24-year-olds is, over the next 20 years, is like this, and the, what is it, the 55 to 64 and plus is going like that. And that's, obviously, there's some real budget implications of that. And then, some of the, what's going on politically in Madison right now? The governor is, and some legislators are talking about, obviously, expanding the statewide voucher program, which now is at 1,000 students. Scott Fitzgerald, who's the Senate Majority Leader, said he thought next year he could see maybe 9,000 vouchers, and this is outside of the Milwaukee and Racine programs. There is some talk of totally taking the cap off, and then also, there's some talk of now the income eligibility is 185% poverty. In Milwaukee and Racine, it's 300%. I think there's some talk about taking the income cap off completely. And then also, there's continued discussion with the Common Core. And I just read something today that the legislature in January wants to address vouchers, accountability, and the Common Core in January. So that's something that I know we've had some discussions here on our approach, and a lot of the organizations that value public education, WSB, ETH, the School Administrators Alliance, WAC, I think they're all talking about what kind of impact we can have, but the political climate in Madison is very difficult to have concerns of public education addressed. So I think that's, and Tony Evers released his proposed budget for the Department of Public Instruction. He is proposing a two-and-a-half percent increase in state aid in the first year of the budget and a 4.9% increase in the second. That amounts to a $453 million increase in general school aids. He also proposed a $160 million increase in categorical aid, and he would like to boost the revenue limits for districts by $200 per pupil in the first year and $204 per pupil the second. Let's people forget, about five years ago, that was about $280 per student, and it would, at that time, I think state law said that that should increase by the Consumer Price Index, and of course, that was all done away with. So that's kind of what, and legislators, those who spoke out about it, were not very receptive to Tony Evers' proposal. Although I do give Luther Olson credit, and he said, "You have to give DPI credit for asking what they think is needed for public education." He said, "It's our job and the governor's job to decide what we can afford." But there are also some other comments that weren't as receptive. So that's kind of the update right now. If anybody has any questions, that concludes my report.
Do you have any good news, Mr. Blaca?
Yes, I don't like giving you bad news, but that's kind of the status of things right now.
It's our reality right now.
That's reality.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Next is district events. I don't know if there's anything anyone wants to announce that's going on in the district.
Can I just share something? Can I just share something? What we've been trying to do with Partners in Education, which is an arm of the chamber, is meet at various sites and businesses. And last week, West High School hosted Partners in Education, and it was very nice to be able to share the great work that's being done there around BayLink Manufacturing. So after the meeting, we had a tour with business partners and fellow superintendents and really looking at how we leverage partnerships in our community to elevate and educate all children to be college, career, and community-ready. It was very well-received. Higher education folks were there, someone from medical college was there, to really look at some of the good work that is going on here in our schools. We have so much to offer, and I think the technical education piece is often unique to public education, and we can't lose sight of that. We do extraordinary things, and I know we'll be talking a little more about some of the offerings we also have in that area as well, coming up here shortly. So it's just one more piece, but it was a very, very well-received and important meeting, I think, for us.
All right. Thank you. Next, we'll move to our systems reports. First, we'll be teaching and learning facilitated by Katie.
Thank you, Brenda. We had several, we have several action items, and they were all thoroughly discussed two weeks ago at our work session. And I will begin with, I move that the redesign of the National Automotive Technician Education Foundation slash Auto Technician Lab as presented be approved.
Second.
Did you leave a question?
No, I didn't. That was, you know, it's a second.
Oh, okay. You raised your hand and took away your turn.
That was pointing, right.
All right, are there any questions before we vote?
I just wanted to mention that I had the pleasure of touring the tech ed department at least last Friday, an area of the building I didn't even know existed, and it was really, Lori was very gracious, along with staff and Richard, to see what the plan is. It seems very well-designed to maximize the current space and to provide adequate teaching space for the vehicles. And I understand there might be some issues as they start to uncover and take down some walls, and I'm sure that Mike has factored that into the budget figure. I'm hoping that there's some accommodating of unforeseen, that always goes with the renovation. But I think it's very well-conceived and a good program.
That's another wonderful example of our community partnering.
Exactly.
It was a very good discussion.
Exciting partnership.
Yes.
All right, Sandy.
Maloney.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Franz.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
Lecker.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the Board Officer Elections Policy as presented be approved.
Second.
Any questions? Sandy.
Lecker.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Franz.
Aye.
Lecker.
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the Board Policy Adoption Review Policy as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy.
Becker.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Franz.
Aye.
Lecker.
Aye.
Lecker.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Franz.
Aye.
Carried six zero.
And I should also preface this, that the recommendations that we had made at the last meeting were changed, incorporated into the policies. I want to thank Melissa and Sandy for getting that going. All right, I recommend that the Board Member Compensation and Expenses Policies as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy.
Wagner.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Franz.
Aye.
Lecker.
Aye.
Carried six zero.
Recommend that the Regular Board Meetings Policy as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy.
Lecker.
Aye.
Franz.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I recommend that the Agenda Preparation and Dissemination Policy as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy.
Maloney.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Lecker.
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the Board Work Sessions Policy and the Procedures for Appointing Board Members to Preside Over Work Sessions, Meetings Rule as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy.
Becker.
Aye.
Lecker.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Franz.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the Public Participation at Board Meetings Policy as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy.
Maloney.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Franz.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
Lecker.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the Agenda Format Exhibit be repealed.
Second.
Sandy.
Second.
Oh, Sandy.
Wagner.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Franz.
Aye.
Lecker.
Aye.
Carried six zero.
And that concludes our report.
All right, thank you, Katie.
You're welcome.
Next, we'll move to organizational support, and that'll be facilitated by Chris Swager.
Thank you. The first item is recommendation, Alan will talk about it here. Would you like me to make the recommended motion first and talk then? Do you want to talk about it first?
No, I think, why don't you make the motion?
You can make the motion, then we can discuss.
Then we'll discuss.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. The recommendation is that the resolution authorizing temporary borrowing in the amount not to exceed $10 million pursuant to Section 67.12 (A), Wisconsin statute, be approved.
Again, this is our annual time to come to short-term borrowing, and the documents that you have at your chair tonight is the resolution that goes with that. And again, our interest rate is going to be 0.79%, which is a good rate. And again, as the $10 million is needed because of the way the cash flow works with school districts, we get our taxes seven months into the school year in January, and our state aids are split out 15% in September, and then 25, 25, 35% is in the last month of the school year. So a lot of school districts do short-term borrow, and again, the borrowing at one time was up to $28 million, and that has been reduced to the $10 million by, again, utilizing and increasing the fund balance over the years to not have to borrow as much as we had in past years.
Alan, I think you explained it, but I guess I'd like you to amplify it a little bit more for the public in particular. There's an article in the paper not too long ago about how districts in this area, including our district, of course, were sitting on a lot, the implication is that they're sitting on a lot of money. Where is that money? And if all that money is there, why are we borrowing it? And again, I know you explained it one way, but if you could do it one more time, I appreciate it.
Even with the fund balance of the amount we have, without having the fund balance, we would have to short-term borrow additional dollars. And again, the fund balance is there to, not only does it help us get a second highest bond rating in the entire, you know, entire Moody's calculation, but it does offer the ability to, in this case, we use some of the fund balance to do some of the construction projects outside the referendum. Fund balance is there for unknowns that may happen. If a boiler would break down during the middle of the school year, we would use the fund balance to do those emergency-type expenditures. But really, what it does, and again, because of the state and when we get our dollars, get our funds, we need to have that fund balance so we do not have to borrow $28 million during the year and have that interest expense, you know, as part of our budget. And those are dollars that are not then utilized for students.
I guess, I thank you, and I'd like to point out, you know, we're often compared with businesses, and in a business, you know, you might feel comfortable borrowing at 5% because you're making 10% on your money. We don't make money in the public sector that when we borrow, the interest rate is what we pay. We're not making additional money on that particular loan. And so actually, at least in my opinion, what the district does, and you've been doing, Alan, is very sound business practice based upon our circumstances. Yes?
I figured out, just for illustration purposes, too, not that, not that I think it's a good idea to, I think it's overdone to compare, well, what if, what if the school district was a household budget? I think it often is distorted, but I think it's, I think it's pretty relevant here. If you took, if you took an income earner of $40,000, the way we get our money would be, and I'm saying monthly instead of quarterly, but it would be somewhat similar to first three months of the year, you get $2,000 a month, and then, then you get $3,300 for the next several months, and then right at the very end, right at the very end, you get $5,000 for a couple of months is roughly the proportions there, which is probably, probably not something that people you owe money to are going to just say, "Oh, yeah, fine, we'll just, we'll just catch you in June when you get the rest of your money." So.
And again, comparisons to cities and counties, you know, all the cities, cities and counties, their beginning of the year is January 1st. So you don't see counties and cities have to do the short-term borrowing because they get their tax money right away in the first month, and they're, you know, and then they're able to gain interest revenue. In school districts, we just do not have that ability to do so based on what the state funding is.
Becker.
Aye.
Lecker.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Franz.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Lecker.
Aye.
Carried six zero.
Alan, you need signatures for someone afterwards, right?
I will be looking for signatures, yes. Autographs.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, under Human Resources, first recommendation is that the 1.0 FTE Electronic System Supervisor Position, 12-month at a salary group of 1167 K-plus to 79 K-plus, or the 2013-14 rates, that the associated job description as presented be approved.
Second.
This is a new job description, a new position, which we feel is necessary because of the complexity of all of the electronic systems that we have. All of these systems are related to school and building safety and student, student-staff safety, and we believe we need a person and a management level to oversee them at that.
Could you differentiate for us the difference between this and what goes on in technology so it's not confused for the public, it's not a confusing issue for the public?
Right. I, these are systems that are tied directly to the buildings. They are the phone systems, the alarm, alarm systems, even systems that are on boilers that alert to problems, that, yes, the badge, which is really a security ID system. And all of these things are run through tech, by technology. Nick Marto is here, and he could probably explain them a little bit better because he knows them inside and out. But because they're tied so much to the buildings, this person, Nick, would report to Mike Stengel. And, you know, I know that they work closely with technology, but in most places, this individual is not in technology, but is usually tied to facilities because that's.
They're two different areas.
Two different areas.
The focus is really around safety, security.
Mr. Black?
Jean, can you or Mike explain who handled this supervision in the past and what necessitated the push to have a full-time person in charge of this?
In the past, this, the position was not management, but the person who was responsible is, was Al Benke, who is now, has left our district for another district. The person now who would be responsible would be Mike Stengel, but he has such broad responsibilities that the level of detail that would be necessary for, for him to know and to supervise on a day basis, something that we felt.
And we hadn't filled Al Benke's position.
We reorganized things.
Reorganized that department, right.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And this is a hands-on position, isn't it?
It's both supervisor and hands-on because the department isn't, isn't very big. There's two people, but this person has a great deal of responsibility, not, you know, it's when the systems are installed, but then there's constant upgrading and maintenance.
Yeah. And the other piece is, as it was explained to me, there's a huge potential for innovation. And what we have seen is that a person at this level, when you look at the industry's standards, are really leading innovation around these areas. So for example, and can, can really bring to the district some significant cost savings. We talked about our radios, for example, and, and they have to have certain parts, components, upgrades, pieces of those. And we know that Nick has been able to save the district some significant cost savings every single year, and we're talking thousands of dollars. We're not talking $50 or anything, but even $50 would be great. But it's always looking at what's going on from a technology standpoint and really making sure we have the best that we can deliver for our students and so forth, and a cost savings to the district. So I think, I think it will benefit us, but there's that innovation piece that typically a person at this level possesses that you don't always get with just a technician who's doing an installation. This is not just about installation. It's always looking and thinking about, about best practice and the facilities themselves.
And upon Michelle's suggestion, we also added the responsibilities of education and training to the job descriptions. This person would be responsible for assuring that people are trained on all of the systems.
Right. So as a, as a building principal or a clerical, all of those people have to know if we're going to change the badge system, the whole thing. So there's a lot of professional development around it as well.
Anything else?
All right, Sandy.
Lecker.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Franz.
Aye.
Carried six zero.
The next recommendation is that the employment of Nicholas Marto as Electronic System Supervisor, 12 months, at the district office at a salary of 74 K-plus, group 11, 94th percentile, prorated to 45 K-plus for this school year effective November 18, 2014, as presented be approved.
Second.
Nick's been with the district since 2009, and he also has a bachelor's degree from UW GB.
How come we prorate to, not this school year, but last school year?
It should be prorated, well, it says the 2013-14 rate.
It's this school year.
It, that is this school year. Well, actually, it was.
No, this is 1450.
It's because the rates that the supervisors are still under until the board votes later in the meeting are the old rates.
Okay, all right.
So that will.
So that'll change.
Go to the 1450.
Yeah.
We should have reordered the motions.
Yeah, reordered.
We should have reordered the motions so we didn't have to.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, Sandy.
Becker.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Franz.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Lecker.
Aye.
Carried six zero. Congratulations, Snickers.
Congratulations. And next recommendation is that the employment of Amy Zellner as Quality Assurance Specialist slash Registered Dietitian at Food Production Center, 12 months at a salary of 62 K-plus, group 12, 86 percentile prorated for the 2013-14 rates, effective on a date to be mutually agreed upon, as presented be approved.
Second.
Amy is a registered dietitian, and she's currently working with the Milwaukee School District as a field supervisor. She works with 25 schools in her area, four charter schools, and her family is from the Green Bay area, so Amy is looking forward to coming back to the area to work. She has her Nutritional Science and Dietetics and a minor in Business from UW GB, so she's also a GB grad, and she's enrolled in a master's program at Mount Mary.
Now, that dietitian position has been. Well, that dietitian position has been vacant.
It has been vacant, yes.
I think that's, that's an important position.
Well, Ms. Marshall alluded to it. What many people don't realize, we do have many students out there that do require a very restrictive offering in terms of foods and whatnot. And there could be dire results for some of those youngsters if that wasn't followed, so this position's definitely needed if for no other reasons. Mr. Becker, do you have a question?
Oh, I was just scratching.
The district does get orders from physicians and has to follow physician orders regarding dietary restrictions for students. And so, you know, just like any large facility, we're preparing special menu items for students under doctor's orders and so the registered dietitian understands this very clearly and can, can be the liaison between family and, and the student and the, and the healthcare provider.
All right, Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Lecker?
Aye.
Carrick 6-0.
Next recommendation is that the limited term employment Cory Vander Ty as coordinator of extended learning, district office at a salary of 42 K plus, 2013-14 rates, effective November 26, 2014 through June 30th, 2015, as presented be approved.
Second.
This is the prorated amount for the period of time that this, Cory will be working with us and he's worked out a date with his district that's mutually agreed upon that he would start. So that's, that's why the date is the 26th.
All right, Sandy?
Wagner?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Lecker?
Aye.
Carrick 6-0.
Next recommendation is that the transfer of Thomas DeBooth, computer technician, 12-month at district office at a salary of 59 K plus, salary group 14th, 100th percentile, to assistant PC network manager slash computer technician, 12 months at district office at a salary of 65 K plus, salary group 13th, 100th percentile, effective November 18th, 2014, as presented be approved.
Second.
This moves Tom up one pay scale to a higher level computer technician position and it reflects the work that he has been doing and the work that he's capable of doing and the work that Diane Dersch believes is necessary in the district. And Tom has been an employee with the district for a very long time. He started here in 1997 as a support technician.
If I'm hearing you correctly, it's not that his position is receiving the increase in salary, his position was changed to have more duties and this is reflecting that, that particular change?
Yes. We, we have other people in this position, so it's not a new position, but it's a, it's a higher level depth of IT personnel working.
All right, Sandy?
Lecker?
Aye.
Franz? Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carrick 6-0.
Next recommendation is that a 1% salary increase for all steps for administrators retroactive to July 1, 2014, as presented be approved.
Second.
This is the same salary increase in keeping with our educators and it would include, as, as indicated, all administrators.
Questions? Cost, cost of living is what? Do you know Alan or...
1.46 is the...
1.?
1.46 percent is...
So, just for the general public, we're not in a position to keep up with cost of living for our employees, let alone something beyond that?
All right, Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Lecker?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Lecker?
Aye.
Carrick 6-0.
Next recommendation is that a 1.46 salary increase for executive assistants retroactive to July 1, 2014, as presented be approved.
Second.
Any questions?
And this is more than 1% because...
This is, we are recommending the executive assistants receive the 1.46, same as the other ASME groups, which would include the clerical positions because the executive assistants, if we do 1%, would, the gap would close between the clericals and the executive assistants. So this keeps it moving at the same, same rate as the clerical staff.
Sandy?
Lecker?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Carrick 6-0.
Next recommendation is a 1.46 percent salary increase for clerical, food service, maintenance, monitors, noon hour supervisors, par professionals and trades, retroactive to July 1, 2014, as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Wagner?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Lecker?
Aye.
Carrick 6-0.
And next is that the salary increases for support staff as listed be approved.
Second.
I just wanted to point out that this year, we're trying to bring all of the wage increases that at, around the same time. And we have a number of positions that are not part of a bargaining unit or administration or managers or technical, technical professionals. So what you have listed is other positions and the recommended salary increase that we feel is necessary. And in most of the cases, we're tying them to one of the units or to, to management. Then we have some head start positions. Those recommendations for the increases are tied to recommendations from Sally Jansen, who closely monitors her budget and feels that these would keep the jobs competitive and they are within the head start budget. So you'll see the head start helper, the lunch hour, and then the head start substitute. And then Lisa Bohm assisted with the rates for the Title I parent assistant, which is also funded within her budget. And then our summer maintenance, we, you probably are aware, but I'll just update you, that we hire in the summer students from our district to do some of the cleaning. And we haven't increased their base rate for a very long time, so we're recommending a modest increase of 25 cents an hour. And then each year that the student returns, if they do return for another summer, they get an additional 25 cents added to their, their rate. And, and a few stay three years, but they usually don't get very far beyond the amount they might get, you know, come back for two or three years at, at, but all of the students we hire are on...
Jean, I just had a question on the Title I parent assistants. I mean, that is, compared to the others, a significant increase. Did we feel that they were being underpaid? I mean, they went from 8.40 to 10?
Yes. Lisa, Lisa felt that and we're tying those Title I parent assistants. Our substitute rate is for all of our clerical, our Paris is $10 an hour. And Lisa feels that this would be a much, much more competitive and actually a fair rate of pay. But she also knows that it doesn't mean that, you know, she, she will hire the number of people to stay within her budget at $10 an hour.
Okay.
And, and she closely monitors that and she has very strict reporting standards, so she, that she hears too.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Lecker?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carrick 6-0.
That concludes my section.
And then we have a consent agenda, I would entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Lecker?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carrick 6-0.
And this is a hands-on position, it's not a...
It's both supervisor and hands-on because the department isn't, isn't very big, there's two people, but this person has a great deal of responsibility, not, you know, it's when the systems are installed, but then there's constant upgrading and maintenance.
Yeah. And the other piece is, as it was explained to me, there's a huge potential for innovation. And what we have seen is that a person at this level, when you look at the industry's standards, are really leading innovation around these areas. So for example, and can, can really bring to the district some significant cost savings. We talked about our radios, for example, and, and they have to have certain parts, components, upgrades, pieces of those. And we know that Nick has been able to save the district some significant cost savings every single year.